Okay, under Old Business, Item A, which is Review and Accept White Paper Memorandum from the City Attorney on Conceptual -- Brisbane Baylands Environmental Impact Report and Planning Review Process. David, I guess this is your last presentation?
Yeah. Mayoral Council, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity as one of my last formal actions here to present the white paper on the conceptual Brisbane Baylands DIR and Planning Review Process. Although it comes from my firm and from me, I want to acknowledge that there were extensive contributions by a number of others. The Planning Director, John Swiki, was involved. The city's environmental consultant and sequel consultants also participated. And the subcommittee comprised of council members Miller and Lentz were instrumental in reviewing many drafts and in providing comments that made it a more concise and useful document to the council and the public in understanding the planning process going forward. So, also...
David, before you get started, a lot of people are probably wondering just exactly what does a white paper mean?
It's a good question, and I actually looked it up on Wikipedia because I wanted to be sure I understood what it meant. And a white paper apparently has been used for a number of years as a policy, a general policy document where when you have an issue that requires some substantial analysis and you want to set some procedures and guidelines for moving forward, it's common to hear it referred to as a white paper. So, given that the Baylands is such a significant issue that there are intertwined environmental and planning issues, it was started as a white paper, and that's really what it is. It's a document that you'll see that discusses the policy and various options in moving forward. Also, I want to point out that I was very pleased to find a slide template. It's not quite as blue in the one that you have perhaps, but in the one that I have, the foreground is blue, which is the bay, then you've got the land and the sky, so I thought it was very appropriate for the Baylands presentation. So, jumping into the Baylands and why we're discussing, the Baylands are approximately 733 acres within the city of Brisbane and bordering the San Francisco Bay, really the largest undeveloped contiguous parcel on the bay at this point. And the Brisbane council and community are committed to the appropriate environmental review and planning to ensure that any development of the Baylands is consistent with Brisbane community values. To accomplish that, there are two separate processes that are currently underway. There's the sequel process, which is the environmental review process, and then there's also the city planning process, which may end up with specific and general plans for the Baylands area. And the purpose of this paper is really to focus on the planning process because up until this time, the focus has been on the issuance of the draft DIR, the comments on the draft DIR, the responses to the comments that will be coming to the council fairly shortly. But what we're starting now is the actual planning process, which will go in conjunction with and parallel to the environmental process. There are a number of possible outcomes to this planning process, and what's important to understand is that this paper doesn't make any particular recommendation, doesn't set out what should happen, but discusses what are the possibilities, what could happen as a result of the planning process that the council and the city is going to be engaged in. The three major possibilities that would come out of this planning process are, first of all, there would be no change to the city's general plan and no specific plan. That would result from a denial of the UPC specific plan and general plan amendment without further action. The second option would be an updated general plan in which the general plan would be adopted and updated. As the council is aware, the current general plan for the Baylands is quite old, doesn't reflect what the current thinking and needs may be for the future development of that property, and a general plan that was updated would hopefully accomplish that land use planning. The third option would be an updated general plan and a specific plan approval, which would be either the adoption of the specific plan proposed by UPC, a modified specific plan. But what that would do is lay out a much more specific Baylands development scenario and parameters describing what the specific land uses are, where they would be, and allowing a specific project application to move forward. Part of that would be updating the general plan so that it would then be consistent with the approved specific plan that the council and Planning Commission elected to move forward with. It's important to understand as well that the process, the planning process and the sequel process are not the only studies and planning processes that the city is currently engaged in to assist with analyzing the Baylands proposal, both from UPC and in general. At this time, there are fiscal and economic studies that are being undertaken. The city is preparing a fiscal impact analysis for a number of multiple Baylands development options with the firm of Kaiser Marston preparing those analyses. There's also the need to look very closely at the infrastructure costs for the Baylands because transition to development would require the development of the infrastructure, I mean, roads, utilities, sewers, water supply, and those have very, very significant expenses. One of the questions is what will support the infrastructure? How can that work economically? And again, what are the options for either building or phasing in the building of those infrastructure requirements prior to any Baylands development? There's also the preparation of the final EIR. I referenced earlier that the draft DIR had been issued in the first part of this year. Actually, I take that back, end part of last year. The comment period continued into early 2014. All the comments have been submitted. There were approximately 2,200 individual comments on the draft DIR. The environmental consultant is in the process of reviewing and responding, preparing responses to all of those 2,200 comments. Those will go into a final EIR, which will then be presented to the Planning Commission, ultimately to the council, to the public for review of the responses to those comments. We anticipate that there will be Planning Commission hearings on the final EIR either in late 2014 or early 2015, and the final EIR will inform and have to be part of whatever planning decision is ultimately made by the city because before you can have an approved general plan, an approved specific plan, an approved project, you have to make sure that you've gone through and have done the appropriate environmental review and that the FEIR is legally adequate to support whatever action the city ends up taking. In addition to the two studies that I just mentioned, one of the other studies that the council has indicated is very important to it is the community opinion survey, where the council is very interested in understanding what the viewpoint is of the community in the development scenarios for the Baylands. The city has retained a professional opinion survey group. They're in the process, as I understand it, of having met with several focus groups, developing the questionnaires for the community survey, and that will also be moving forward in the fall. One of the goals is that before the Planning Commission or the council would look at any of the specific plan or general plan amendments or proposals, that we will have the results of the economic survey, the opinion survey, and any other survey necessary to inform your decision making. A fourth plan or area which is significant in terms of looking at the prospective general and specific plans is the sustainability plan that the city has also been working on over the last several years. There's currently a draft sustainability plan, which is based on one planet living principles. It has performance standards that can be looked at in terms of achieving some of those sustainability goals, and the sustainability plan that has been drafted will also be used in looking at and informing the consideration and decision on both the specific plan and general plans moving forward. So, those are the four studies in addition to the general plan and specific plan considerations that are underway, and the first step in the process would be for the Planning Commission to hold public hearings on the specific plan, which is proposed by UPC, and any general plan amendment that would be necessary as part of that specific plan. So, the Planning Commission will hold public hearings. There will be opportunity for public comment on the specific plan and on the general plan. It will also consider the FEIR, and because it's important to distinguish that the Planning Commission is not making any final decisions on either the specific plan, the general plan, or the FEIR, but instead is making recommendations to the council for the council's use in its consideration, the goal would be for the Planning Commission to have a somewhat expedited hearing process and to get its recommendations to the council within a three-month timeframe after starting those hearings. That may be a little bit optimistic, but the goal certainly is to move that along as quickly as possible. After the Planning Commission, here's the proposed specific plan from UPC, the general plan amendment that would go along with that, and looks at the FEIR. There were three potential recommendations that could come out of that process before the Planning Commission. The first would be the approval of the UPC proposed specific plan and general plan amendment close to or with minor modifications from the way that it's originally submitted, so that the Planning Commission, if it were to make a recommendation to move forward with the UPC specific plan and general plan amendment, would forward that to the council with that recommendation. A second possibility would be for the Planning Commission to recommend major revisions to the UPC proposed specific plan and the general plan amendment that would come out of that specific plan. Major revisions would be changes in uses of the land uses, anything that would really significantly impact the way that the Baylands would be utilized. They would then send those recommendations to the council and defer any action on the application and on the FEIR certification until it went before the council and there was a revised proposal that was responsive to those major revision recommendations. The third possibility would be to recommend the denial of the UPC specific plan and the associated general plan amendment. In that case, there would be no FEIR certification. However, even if that takes place, there could be a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the council in terms of appropriate land use policy for the Bayland. So, that is the first land use planning step, which is through the Planning Commission, recommendations on the specific plan, the general plan, and the FEIR. Now, we move to the next step, which is after those recommendations are made by the Planning Commission, they come to the city council, who is the final decision maker on all of these issues related to the Baylands. The city council will consider the Planning Commission recommendations, will look at their reasons, justifications for whatever those recommendations are, but ultimately, the council sits as an independent decision maker, and the final decision on the specific plan, general plan, and FEIR are up to the city council. There are, as there were with the Planning Commission, a number of options for the city council action after the matter comes to the city council. The city council could approve the UPC proposed specific plan and the associated general plan amendment, again, with some minor revisions, and with a certification of the FEIR as addressing the environmental impacts in the UPC specific plan and general plan. A second option would be for the council to require major revisions to the UPC proposed specific plan and general plan amendment prior to any approval. As I mentioned before, a major revision would be the change to the land use plan or types of development, and then, at that point, the applicant in discussions with the city, with the council, and with the planning department could take the city council guidance and revise and resubmit the application, the specific plan and general plan amendment application, and that would certainly be the preferable option. Another option would be for the city and consultants to take the lead in developing a new specific plan, using again council guidance, and with the collaboration and working together with the developer, the proposer, UPC, in the matter. The third option would be council denial of the proposed specific plan and the associated general plan amendment. That would effectively end the planning and environmental review process for the Baylands, at least for this current application. There would also be no update of the general plan for future development guidance on the Baylands, so it would leave the city in effectively the same position it was in before going through all of the work to put together the FEIR and to review the various plans. So, in the event that there was not to be an application moving forward, there still is the possibility for a city-sponsored planning process. If that were to take place, then there would have to be discussion and direction in terms of both the desired outcome for a general plan and specific plan, or whether one or the other should be focused on, and there would have to be discussion of to what extent the current environmental impact review could be utilized, depending on whether the proposal for general plan and specific plan are within the options that have been studied in the current FEIR, or whether there would need to be an addendum, supplemental, or new EIR, depending on how different the plan was from the current proposals that are before the Planning Commission and council in the draft DIR and ultimately the final EIR. In terms of the funding for the Baylands planning process, the applicant is responsible for funding the environmental planning and consulting costs directly associated with its application in moving it forward through the planning and environmental review process. If the city were to decide not to proceed with the application, either with or without modifications, then the applicant is not required to fund independent city planning and environmental review processes after the point that the application is no longer being considered. The city could investigate state and regional grants or authorize general fund expenditures. Those would likely be substantial and could have an impact in terms of what options the council has in terms of independent city planning moving forward by itself. It's very important to note that the council has indicated its intent to allow Brisbane voters to consider and weigh in and approve or disapprove the Baylands land use plan prior to final adoption by the city. Both general and specific plans are legislative enactments. However, it's recommended that if a matter is on the ballot, it would be the general plan. The reason for that is that once something is adopted by a vote of the public, then it requires another vote of the public to make any changes, and for something like a specific plan, which really needs to respond to, to reflect what the current needs are, to allow the council to make the appropriate changes and directions, would be more difficult to have, go back to the voters every time. However, the general land use plan, which sets the parameters, the uses, and provides guidance for the specific plan, would be something that could appropriately go to the voters, and again, the council has indicated its intent to have that do so. So, in conclusion, the Brisbane Baylands and any potential development implicates a number of very critical historical, environmental, and land use planning issues, which are of great importance to the Brisbane community and, of course, the Brisbane city council. The city and the council has committed to a thorough process with opportunity for community involvement. The white paper outlines really from the 20,000-foot level the future planning process and some of the planning options the city will have available. It is not intended to recommend or push for any particular outcome. It is intended to inform the discussion going forward, and that in the future, as the specific planning goes through the process, more information becomes available, the process will be refined and modified as necessary to reflect new information that comes in. So, that, in summary, is what the white paper discusses in somewhat more detail. Again, thanks to the subcommittee for your input over the course of what's really been about a year's process in taking this from the initial draft to the presentation tonight. It outlines and provides a roadmap going forward for both the council and for the community in terms of what the planning steps are. And with that, I'll conclude the staff report and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you, David. Council questions?
Can I, on the conceptual EIR and Planning Review Process flow chart?
Yes.
The upper column is not readable. Could you give me a brief review of what those say?
Page four.
Yes, on page four.
John has them memorized. Is yours readable? Is yours readable? I can tell you what they are.
I apologize. My version, we were trying to get this to reproduce, and unfortunately, because of the size and the need to get it on the spreadsheet, the boxes reproduced and the chart itself did not. But if you give me one second, I can probably get it up on my computer unless...
First column says initial steps at close of public hearing review, for public review. Or for public review.
Initial steps at close?
At close.
Of public review.
Of EIR public review.
For public review. The second one is Planning Commission hearings.
Okay.
Third one is potential Planning Commission recommendations. Fourth one is city council hearings. Fifth one is potential city council actions. Fifth one is potential direction...
Potential direction to modify...
I'm sorry, I can't hear both of them.
Potential direction to modify Baylands development plan. You want to do the next one, David?
Sure. Next one is modifications to Baylands development plan, and the final one is subsequent environmental review.
Yeah, I think what we need to do when we bring it to the Planning Commission and elsewhere is to make this a huge and then just have it fold in, so it just needs to be bigger.
Yeah, yep. Agreed.
And so, on this flow chart, where in this process is the survey's going to be, the public survey is going to be before it goes to Planning Commission hearings?
That's correct.
And those results will be in and given to the Planning Commission to incorporate into their hearings? And then where would the public voting be incorporated into this flow chart?
It'd be at the very end, wouldn't it?
Well, it would be assuming that the council, after review, developed what it felt to be was an appropriate general plan amendment based on whatever specific plan it ended up deciding to approve, then at that point, before the city would adopt the general plan, it would be put on the ballot and given to the voters for approval or disapproval.
Okay, but where in the flow chart?
At a box.
It would be where about one, two, the fifth column over, after it talks about ending the process with approval, approval with major modifications, then at that point, it would go to the voters.
So, after the council takes action on approving the plan and the general planned condition, or changes, that's where the voting would take place if we approved with minor or major modification?
Yes.
Okay.
I would guess, is the question, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
That what, at that point, if the council has something that they would like to approve, but they are, of course, dependent on ultimate community approval, they would say, okay, this is approved on the condition that it is approved by the voters and blah, 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 blah. Would they do something like, could they do something like that? Or what would be the process there?
No, if it's something where the council actually wants to put it on for approval, then it wouldn't be conditional council approval. It would be something that would be submitted to the electorate for approval. There was discussion in the subcommittee that one possibility would be for the council to put an advisory vote on the general plan on the ballot, where the council could say, we think this is the appropriate general plan amendment, we would like to get an advisory vote from the electorate before we take action one way or the other, but that would be a different action than actually putting it on the ballot for approval or disapproval. So, if the council elects to, if the council decides to put it on the ballot for approval, then that decision would ultimately not be made by the council. The council would present the plan and develop it, but then it would either be approved or not approved based on the results of that election.
But that would be at the end.
That would be at the end of the process.
Yeah, which would be after the sequoia review of the revised plan, right? You'd want to make sure that, it'd be after the sequoia review of the revised plan, because you'd want to make sure that it's...
Yeah, if the council moved forward with that, then it would have to certify the appropriate environmental review that would support whatever the general plan amendment would be that it's putting before the voters.
Right. So, just to be clear, so the council would have to actually certify the FEIR, right? But then they wouldn't necessarily take action on the specific plan and general plan amendment, whichever goes forward? How would they put it to, what are the options for putting it to the voters for their final approval? That whole sequence there would be nice to spell out. What's your sense of that?
I'd probably have to take a closer look at the times when that could be done. I mean, at this point, the intent and the purpose of the white paper was to, again, outline the overview. Part of that overview was the intent that the council has expressed, to put the general plan amendment before the voters at some point in the process. The exact point in the process that that would go forward is something that, while it would certainly be after the council had looked at and developed a recommendation for the general plan, I think that we'd probably have to go back and take a look at exactly where in the flow chart it would most appropriately go and how that would work. it would most appropriately go and how that would work. And my successor, I'm sure, will be taking a look at that and advising as this moves forward. But at some point in the process, the appropriate point in the process, there would be the opportunity for the vote on the general plan.
And I could be definitely wrong on that, but to follow up, because our general plan was enacted and voted on by referendum, doesn't that mean that we, to change it dramatically, we have to put it to a vote?
No, because, as you pointed out correctly, Councilmember O'Connell, it was a referendum. So the way that worked when it was adopted previously was that it was the Council that adopted the general plan. A referendum is a question, should what the Council has taken action on be reversed? The vote was that it should not be reversed. So the actual action on that general plan was actually by the Council rather than by the electorate. That is a different scenario than the electorate actually taking the action to adopt the plan itself. So in this case, if you were to look at what happened in 1995 for this situation, the analogous situation would be that the Council would take action on the general plan before putting it to the vote, would make its best decision. And then if the public felt that there was an issue with that, then there could be a referendum. Somebody could file for a referendum on that action. But the action would still be taken by the Council rather than by the electorate. And so I understand that it's confusing because they both involve votes. But in the prior case, it was the Council that took action, so it does not require a vote of the public to change the general plan. The Council would have that option if it wanted to go ahead with it.
Do you have any questions?
I was gonna wait and see if Lori or Terry.
I have the same question about the timing of when the public vote would occur. So I don't have any questions, other questions at this time.
Okay. Ray?
Yeah, I have just one other thing since Cliff and I were intimately involved in the drafting of this paper over many, many, many months. So I'm pretty comfortable with the content, so that's not an issue for me. But I do have a question about the proper motion to make. And I noticed that the recommendation is that we just receive it. And I was kind of hoping that we could do a little bit more than that. And so that's kind of my question as to, is this a little bit more that I'm suggesting, okay with you? I was hoping that we could say something like, the Council receives the White Paper and accepts it as general guidance for the Brisbane, Baylands, EIR and planning review process.
Yes.
Would that be okay?
That's fine. The Council, the hope was that the Council would at minimum accept the paper. And if the Council wants to express how it would like the White Paper to be used going forward as a general guideline for the planning process, that's entirely appropriate and can be part of the motion.
Okay. What do you think, Cliff?
I think that is, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we'll get to that. We'll do it. Cliff has it.
Yeah, you know, just in regards to the Planning Commission meetings. So if the Planning Commission recommended that there be major revisions, that they need to be clearly identified in the Planning Commission's recommendation, so how would they present that? And then also, if they decided to deny, how would they prepare that?
The Planning Commission, for whatever action they take and whatever recommendation they make, would want to really be very clear with the Council in terms of what the basis was for their decision or for their recommendation. So they would, with the assistance of the City Attorney's Office and the planning staff, put together a fairly extensive finding of fact and basis for whatever recommendation they make. Those would be in writing and those would come to, of course, the applicant, the Council, the public in advance of any council consideration, so that everybody would be fully informed in terms of what the basis was for the Planning Commission's recommendations. But I think one of the goals here is, whatever happens, to have as much clarity as possible for, again, the applicant, for the Council, for the community in terms of if there's a reason for approval, what that reason is. If there's a reason for modification, what that reason is. To make sure that everybody understands and when you're working forward, has the information that you need to make whatever changes are necessary.
Okay, all right. And that the Planning Commission's actions are clearly recommendations and the process moves forward to the Council, no matter what the recommendation is?
That's correct. Under the statutory scheme, the Planning Commission makes recommendations. The decisions are ultimately the Council's.
Okay. And then, you know, just the last part in regards to the public vote. So what type of process did we use for the query in regards to amending the general plan? How was that proposed to the voters? Was it, were we voting on the plan itself or were you voting on amending the general plan?
I don't know, John. Yeah, it was a general plan and I think it was the zoning also, right?
It was the entire, I believe, the specific plan.
Specific plan, general plan, and was there a development agreement in that too?
I believe so.
Yeah.
It was a project.
All those were submitted to the voters.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
I think it was just one.
It was just one vote.
One ballot.
One ballot issue.
Issue, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
It's a mini version of what you'll be dealing with here.
Yes.
Any other Council questions? Terry?
Potentially, if this comes to a vote on general plan and possibly a specific plan, is that a 50% plus one vote? And would that be in a general election or does that have any correlation? Can it be in any election?
It would be a 50% plus one majority vote. And I'd have to check the statute to see if there's any restriction on whether it has to be a general election or not. I don't know the answer to that without looking at the statute on that.
Thank you.
I don't want to play City Attorney, but I will. I don't think it does. It just costs you more money. Okay. Any other questions? No, this is good. Good guidance. I think it helps not only the Council bring clarity, but will for the community and Planning Commission as far as how the process goes. So I guess, Ray, you wanted to do a motion on this?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion that the Council receive and accept the White Paper as general guidance for the Brisbane, Baylands, EIR and planning review process.
Second.
Okay. Before I call the question, I know the representatives of the property owners here, is there anything you wish to say? Give you the opportunity.
Jonathan Sharpe, General Manager of UPC. And I just wanted to make sure that the Council understands that we, when we submitted the specific plan for the site, it was at the strict urging of the City Council and the staff that we develop guidelines from which future development can occur. And so while there might be, what I would ask in going forward, while there might be some differences in opinion that may or may not have potentially significant environmental impacts associated with them in terms of ultimate land uses, that I ask you to take a fresh look at the specific plan itself that UPC has submitted that was very well considered and actually provides a framework, absent specific land uses, provides a framework from which any specific plan will need to guide development on a site like that. And I just ask you to just take a fresh look at it. Again, absent the differences of opinion in land use, particularly to focus on the chapter on land use, land use and community design, and also on open space. These are really best practices in the area for implementation. And we would submit that once the final EIR informs land use decisions, that revisions to that document would be sufficient to reconcile any outstanding concerns where there might need to be additions. It's a really good document. So I just wanted to offer that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, five zero. All right, very good. Staff report, City Managers' report on upcoming activities?
Now that we're all back from our summer fun, we're gonna be having a flurry of various Council Subcommittee meetings in the month of September and probably into October. So I would imagine that that will generate a number of items coming forward to the Council this fall that we've been working on for quite some time. So that's certainly gonna dominate your agenda. We do have one workshop that we want to schedule and that's later on this agenda. But I think there's probably gonna be at least one other workshop and I'll work with the mayor on that. Bring that forward maybe on the 18th of schedule.
Okay. Item 10, the Mayor Council Matters, item A, which is countywide assignments and Subcommittee reports. Anybody met or wish to talk about it?
We met on economic development on August 28th. And that's Cliff and myself. And we had a presentation from ULI on the Cocker Park Tap. And from that discussion, we're gonna be having a workshop with the full Council to talk about economic development and what our priorities are in terms of moving forward with what was studied in the Tap. And then the second thing is, we met with the new owner of the former VWR site and they talked about what they plan to do with the property and some of the issues there.
Okay. Any other Subcommittee boards?
I have just one thing I wanted to report, which is what's kind of sad news. And that is that the lead person from the survey company, FM3, Shakari, has decided to move on to another opportunity for herself, which means that we've lost a very good person. And a lot of time that Cliff and I and others put into educating her on Brisbane background. So now we will have a new person that we'll have to educate. And we'll see how long that takes. And that, of course, depends upon how quick a study that this person is. And we haven't met this person yet, so anyway, that was kind of disappointing news. So that's probably gonna set us back a little. We'll have to see. Just thought I'd bring that to everybody's attention.
Okay. We did get that in the City Managers' report somewhere. Anything else? Written Communications? We have none. Item C, Schedule Economic Development Council Workshop. I think this is what you were talking about, Lori, in the ULI.
That's right.
Follow-up. About tomorrow. Don't forget tomorrow.
We'll be out of town.
Let's see, one on my left, the one on my right.
Are you on?
I am now.
You are now. Thank you.
I was saying...
Want to say everything again?
I'm sorry, the first available Thursday is not until October 30th. But if we want to move it to another day of the week, we could, you know, if we wanted to maybe do a Monday workshop, obviously a lot of other dates are open. Mayor's shaking his head.
I don't want to do a Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, you changed the Monday, yeah.
Tuesday night's not a good night, so.
Contradicts the...
Yeah. Yeah, Lori and I were hoping that we could do the workshop as this standalone item. And, you know, to be able to get the Council's feedback on the items that were addressed in the Tap. And so that then we can take that and help craft, you know, the final economic development plan. You know, we also talked about perhaps getting feedback from the Council in regards to the downtown and the Village, too. And depending upon how we organize the meeting, perhaps some feedback on Zero Point, too. Just to kind of get some, you know, some guidelines of things that we like, things that we think could be enhanced, things that we're hearing from the community that we think should be implemented. You know, we also own a lot of property, too. And so what are we gonna do with those properties? You know, what is our vision, you know? What are the things that we're, you know, that we could get excited about and rally behind certain economic development guidance? You know, for future amenities for the town, future revenue sources for the town. So we could do it at nighttime, you know, it'd be a nighttime thing. We do it on a weekend, if you think that's better.
Maybe doing it around like a table, you know, more of a conversational setting.
Absolutely, more of a...
Like, kind of like, you know, if we were in a conference room or in here, you know, it would be publicly noticed, but it would be, we wouldn't be sitting up here, you know. We would be facing each other.
Is it October 30th?
October 30th is the next Thursday it's available.
Okay.
I mean, that date works. It is the day before Halloween, so it's, you know, kind of a busy week, but...
We'd like to figure it in September. I mean, today's only the second, so that's pushing that meeting two months out if we do it on the 30th.
Just that, you know, with the way, with Thursdays now, we have an automatic conflict every other Thursday with the Planning Commission.
Yeah, well, I mean, it doesn't have to be a Thursday, right? I mean, it could be a Wednesday or whatever day other than Monday. Of course, I'm sure we also have other, you know, conflicts, too. And so that would be something we'd have to work out. But it would be nice to do it sooner than later.
I don't think that all our economic development opportunities are going to go away if we don't do the meeting until the 30th.
Oh, no, sure. I mean, if that's the day that the Council all decides. Just that, you know, when you're working on something, you know, it's fresh in your head. You like to then get it out instead of having to then wait a couple of months and then like refresh yourself on why you're, you know, trying to present something. So just kind of like out of respect for the Subcommittee, I think it would be nice if we had the meeting earlier.
I'm looking at staff, because I'm hearing them say October 30th unless it's a different day. Are there different days? Maybe you can come up with some options that we can...
Well, again, it kind of comes down...
Well, again, it kind of comes down to what day of the week you're willing to meet. You know, I know there's conflicts with Mondays, there's conflicts with Tuesdays. Those are open. Wednesdays, I think we have the, some Parks and Rec. Open space in Parks and Rec. So there's a couple of conflicts. Yeah. Look, we could potentially move our meeting into the conference room, I suppose.
What's the Tuesday conflict?
I believe Terry has indicated in the past that she, Tuesdays don't...
That's summers only.
Only summers.
Those are over.
Oh, okay. Okay, then that conflict doesn't exist, then. You could do, if you wanted to do it Tuesday, we could do, I think, as early as September 16th, or 23rd, or 30th.
How about the 23rd? Could you, Cliff?
I have personal reasons for not wanting in on that date.
Oh, okay.
But the 30th is okay.
Close the end of month.
The 30th?
Well, you know, I did sign up for the county civic 101 course, which is every Tuesday, starting on the 16th. But I mean, I can miss a day to do this. This is...
What Tuesday were you talking about?
So...
Is that thing in the evening?
It is.
It is, 6:30 to 8, 8 o'clock or something, or 6:30, 8:30, something like that.
Which days?
Every Tuesday, starting on the 16th, for two months.
Okay. How about a...
But I'm willing to miss one of those meetings to do this.
How about September 30th, then?
That should work, from a calendar standpoint.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And is this going to be a public meeting?
Has to be.
All of our meetings are, except for closed sessions.
So, John, just remind me, I think we had had a desire to have ULI also participate. So we do need to kind of check on their availability.
Oh, okay.
But hopefully, it's a month out that we'll be able to get some representation from there.
All right.
As Cliff has indicated, I think, quite well, it's, I think the hope is that the discussion is much broader than just the ULI reporting, much broader than just the issues that are focused on that economic zone. It's really all the economic zones in there.
Are you? Thank you.
Now you're on.
Yeah, we weren't hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that they can hear you at that end of the dius, and I don't.
Okay. So anyway, we'll check with ULI, just to make sure that they're available for that evening. And assuming that they are, then we'll go forward with that.
And what time would everyone like to meet?
7:30.
Yeah. You can't meet earlier, though.
Yeah, I can't really. No, Thursdays are hard. So, 7:30.
So Tuesday, September 30th, at 7:30?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay. That brings us to oral communications, number two. And we don't have anybody in the audience, so a motion to adjourn. All right, word adjourned.
Thank you.